Good morning, I'm Kenya McDuffie, at large council member and Chair of the Council's Medium in Business and Economic Development. Today is Wednesday, June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and we're reconvening this hearing in person and via Zoom. The time is twelve P M. I'm calling this public hearing to order. The today, the committee will continue to receive public testimony on Bill twenty-five dash two eighty, the Workers and Restaurants Act of two thousand twenty-three. We'll also hear from a single government witness representing the Office of the Attorney General. As a reminder, public witnesses will each have three minutes to provide oral testimony and should remember to mute their microphones when they are not speaking. We also encourage our public witnesses to submit written testimony via email to the committee. I'm now going to begin to call names as I stated when I recessed this hearing, beginning from witness number seventy-five, I will make a call for all the witnesses. I understand that a few have been in communication with the committee about testifying today and some have not. Those who have not and still wish to provide their written testimony can do so. I'm going to start with Isabella Strata, Kiana Stevens, Michael Dullinger, Helen Abraha, Veronica Tucker, Sophia Miyoshi, Diana DeBruce, Jeffrey Meskiri, Clyde Roberts, Glage, Shini, Little Wahetti, Jenna Velella, Claire Parker, Fabian, Marita Cruz, Teresa Garcia, Rosalba Rodriguez Santos, Francisca Tejeda, Mary Pinzon, Elaine Hansen, Grace Shia, Ayomidi Abatton, Adelies Ortiz Morales, Elliot Becker, Danielle Schafrich are the public witnesses that I'm calling. And I believe we have a few people who are being promoted now. We're going to begin with with Helen Abraha. Good morning to you. Thanks for joining us. We appreciate you be here this morning. You can begin your testimony. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman McDuffie, and members of the committee for this opportunity to testify. My name is Helena Braha, and I am testifying on behalf of the Restaurant Opportunity Center of Washington, D.C., an organization made up of hospitality workers and dedicated to ensuring that restaurant workers maintain their workplace rights and adequate pay and have the support to stand up when their dignity is violated. We stand in opposition to McDuffie's proposed bill, which will directly undermine the will of the voters and Initiative eighty-two and set a dangerous precedent for the usage of service charges in our city. Our members and restaurant workers across D.C. who are aware of what this bill is proposing are strongly opposed to any change to the timeline of the minimum wage increase in the vague service charge amendments, which pose a direct threat to the amount of tips that front-of-house workers will receive. However, there are many restaurant workers who are unaware of this bill and are expecting the minimum wage increase, which it is their right to be made aware of. While the supposed intention of the proposed bill asks us to trade off one delayed year of wage increase for a larger payoff in two thousand twenty-five, this steep jump from eight dollars to seventeen dollars will allow the restaurant lobby to feel emboldened to call for appeal, in our opinion. The point of the slow increase each year is for restaurants, especially smaller mom-and-pop establishments, to gradually adjust to the full minimum wage, and such a drastic jump all at once could end up being detrimental to them. Restaurants should also not be entitled to the exception that designates their labor costs to be an additional fee to be paid off by customers, specifically in a way that misleads them into thinking that tipping is unnecessary when it is, when it still is. When customers see a service charge, they will become confused about whether or not they should tip. It is no coincidence that the twenty-two percent service charge rate is close to the current accepted tipping rate. In combination with the messaging that service charges will be used to cover employee pay, diners will simply assume that the money goes directly to the worker when in reality it goes to the establishment, especially with little to no enforcement or transparency required by the employers. As detailed in the report we published in collaboration with D.C. Jobs Justice last year, the Freedom of Information Act data shows that approximately ninety percent of restaurants already don't report tips and have not for years, although they are required to do so as a concession to the repeal of I seventy-seven. They have also, they have shown that they can, we cannot rely on restaurants themselves to voluntarily be truthful. No oversight committee or reporting structure in this bill, no accountability in its current form. All this will directly lead to less income for workers. A simple solution to this dilemma already exists through auto gratuity. So this attempt to introduce another unnecessary fee to cover business costs reveals a poorly hidden way to allow restaurants to use service charge money for their own purposes rather than returning it to the workers. As we see it, this bill poses two main issues. This bill will not only impact the workers, it will also impact all customers and consumers traveling in.
Helen Abraha, thank you for your testimony this morning. Our next witness is Jeffrey Meskiri. Good morning to you. Thanks for joining us virtually this morning. You can begin your testimony.
Good morning, Mr. McDuffie. Good morning, everyone. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Hi, my name is Jeff Meskiri, and I'm, I'm a, I'm the CEO of Meskiri Society Group. I own restaurants based out in Maryland and D.C. And to go over what was said before on the top of discussion, the wage increase will have a detrimental effect to a lot of small-owned and local restaurants who, in addition, could try to stay competitive and compete for what's going on. The wage increases is very high. A lot of people have their opinions about it. But at the end of the day, we are the operators with the P and Ls and with the balance sheets. And ever since COVID, a lot of restaurants haven't been able to recover. And the bottom line numbers in the restaurants and the biggest pie in that, in that assessment of restaurants is labor costs. The labor costs in D.C. for my restaurants, I've been an operator since two thousand and thirteen. It increased every year, and that's, and that's due highly in fact to the wages, the service industry by having servers or high workers, which we call it, it makes up and it helps for restaurants in terms of labor costs because they, you know, they receive tips from consumers and they're able to help out, like I said, with payroll, but with the increase, I mean, anyway, you put it, if it's in one year, two years, three years, four years, the bottom line numbers for restaurants suffer, more restaurants are closed. It would just be really, really detrimental. You know, I have restaurants in Maryland, and it's night and day when I view my P and Ls and analyze my labor costs from the District Columbia. You know, D.C. is very high and competitive, and a lot of these corporate restaurants are paying high-end money. So the wage increase is very frightening and fearful because, you know, as a kid, a twenty-three-year-old, to have my eyesight, being born and raised in the District Columbia, I've opened a restaurants in D.C. and now, you know, it's very fearful because, you know, not only, you know, the tip increase and puts all the, it's just a lot, you know, doing business to grow and make money. Everyone has a business to grow and make money and serve as a community and do good, right and good about a community. But the labor cost, the labor, the labor, the labor laws and this tip, this tip initiative is very, very, it's very serious and it definitely affects restaurants. Even if you look at, if you, if, and then when you factor in servitage and that too, it's still, it's still a huge cost and effect, especially when a lot of servers in the industry, they work overtime as well, like, you know, they work a lot of hours. So that's, that's another avenue where it's really effective for our restaurants, and that's all I have to say.
And thank you for taking the time out of your business to actually provide testimony this morning. We want to hear next from Clyde Roberts Glage, who's joining us virtually. I understand is here. If you want to unmute yourself and begin your testimony, you'll have three minutes.
Apologies. Hi, my name is Kwai Tai Roberts Laga. I'm the co-owner and general manager of Cafe Berlin. I'm here to voice my support for the Workers and Restaurants Act. Cafe Berlin was opened in nineteen eighty-five by three German immigrants on Capitol Hill near Union Station. There wasn't much going on in the area. There were only a couple other businesses on the block. My husband Rico started working at Cafe Berlin in October two thousand seven, when he immigrated to the United States. And we met when I started working there in December and married the following year. In two thousand thirteen, Rico and I purchased Cafe Berlin and began a new era for the landmark that currently employs twenty staff. I want to start by thanking Councilman McDuffie for introducing this bill, the council for holding the hearing and for caring about the vibrance of the local community that independent restaurants help kindle. My staff has felt anxiety since the passage of I eighty-two over the uncertainty of how diners will react to the incremental changes to menu prices and service charges in response to the incremental wage increases. They saw a huge loss of business when we experienced, that we experienced during the vaccine mask mandates and diners preferring to patronize restaurants in Virginia that didn't have those restrictions. Budget-conscious tourists also have options when, especially when lodging in Virginia. They're going to have dinner in D.C. before returning to their hotel or choose a Virginia restaurant that doesn't have a tax on gratuity or service charges. I also see that the sales tax waiver is a help for our district residents with rising costs everywhere. They won't have to pay that additional tax on the service charges, and those savings could translate to another restaurant visit that month. Better to have, for D.C. to have the revenue we have than none at all. I eighty-two has as regimes us to incremental increases in the menu prices and/or service charges over the course of five years. With the incremental increase of those front-of-house costs over a course of several years, independent operators are hampered in ways that large restaurant groups are not. The amendment being, the amendments being considered today would change that and would give small independent operators a fighting chance. They would be on more equal footing with the large restaurant groups when menu prices or service charges do increase in order to offset the wage increases. Here's to council to support the workers and restaurants, our priorities act, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your testimony, Kwai Tai Roberts Glage. Our next witness who's joined us is Kes Leto Ahedi. Good morning to you. You can begin your testimony. You'll have three minutes. Afternoon, I should say.
Thank you, Chair McDuffie. My name is Kes Tadewahedi. I'm a longtime D.C. resident and voter who enthusiastically supported both Initiative seventy-seven and Initiative eighty-two. Strong majorities of D.C. voters have spoken twice very strongly in support of one fair wage. Several weeks ago, I attended a hands-off D.C. rally protesting a congressional hearing on D.C. election laws. I get riled up having to defend the democratic rights of D.C. residents from G O P congress members, but it pains me far more to defend our democratic rights from corporate lobbyists and their allies in D.C. government. I have never seen democratic principles violated in our city as egregiously as in the campaign for one fair wage. After Initiative seventy-seven won at the ballot box in two thousand eighteen, Chairman Mendelson introduced the Tipped Wage Workers Fairness Amendment Act of two thousand eighteen, an Orwellian title for the bill that would repeal I seventy-seven. Chair McDuffie, you were one of the co-introducers of that bill and one of the eight council members who voted repeal I seventy-seven. Four years later, Initiative eighty-two was on the ballot. D.C. voters were angry about the repeal, so last year, D.C. council candidates fell over themselves expressing support for I eighty-two. I was at D.C. for Democracy's At Large Candidate Forum in September fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, where the lightning round included the following question. If Initiative eighty-two passes in November, will you pledge to uphold the will of voters and allow it to become law? Here is the screenshot of the response. With the exception of the Republican candidate, everyone, including you, gave a thumbs up to that question. But apparently, campaign promises are pretty worthless. You are spearheading this bill, which also has an Orwellian name since workers are clearly not priorities in this legislation. By replacing the gradual increase in the tipped wage with an extremely abrupt increase, by incentivizing restaurants to switch to service charges, and by declaring service charges the property of owners, this bill is a threat to I eighty-two and to service workers. At this hearing, we have seen the same organizations who led I eighty-two testify in opposition to this bill while the restaurant lobby supports it. We all know what the RAP Act is about. It's a Trojan horse to destroy I eighty-two and once again overturn the will of the people. The fact that the council is even considering this bill is an insult to D.C. voters. Stop wasting our time. Stop trying to destroy one fair wage. Vote down this bill. Thank you.
And thank you for your testimony this afternoon. The next witness who has joined the Zoom is Fabian Marita Cruz. Good afternoon to you, and you can begin your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie. I'm going to say in Spanish, I'm sorry. Gracias al concejal McDuffie y a los miembros del comité por esta oportunidad de testificar. Mi nombre es Marita y vivo en la zona dos y he vivido en D.C. cinco, diecisiete años y soy un consumidor que apoya a los trabajadores en un restaurante y me ocupo de las facturas de cargos por servicio de concejal McDuffie. Este proyecto de ley amenaza con destruir la iniciativa ochenta y dos aprobada por los residentes de D.C. Y también los salarios de los trabajadores, recibiendo propinas, regalando el salario mínimo regular. El consumidor ha descubierto que los cargos por servicio en los restaurantes son muy procesos y potencialmente violentos. Esto es una muy, muy tridimosia de los cargos dinámicos, incluso si es tan importante que se usa para los salarios. No hay transparencia, supervisión o compromiso para responsabilizar a los nuevos restaurantes que no han usado este dinero. Por un cargo de servicio de veinte por ciento a la factura, es difícil saber si debemos dar propina o si lo hacemos para eso, que ya es un gasto mucho mayor para nuestra cuenta. Como residente apoyo a la iniciativa, la iniciativa ochenta y dos, y me da mucho gusto. Y quiero que el presidente apoye con fuerte del presidente de D.C. Que los restaurantes no deben tener menos cargos por servicio. Sus empleados o los trabajadores, si yo hago servicio obligar a utilizar el sistema, pero las propinas propinas. No de pie, los restaurantes son especiales y obligar a los clientes a pagar los salarios de sus empleados. No es posible vivir con un salario ni de licencia en una ciudad la más importante del mundo. Tener que pagar una renta en su, sus, doscientos, doscientos quinientos mil pesos. El costo es muy elevado, la mayoría de los vecinos, pero son los sectores interiores. Y absorblo que tienen por lo menos, entonces, para sobrevivir, entonces, en, 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 ochenta y dos. El apoyo es para nuestros amigos, amigos y los trabajadores más miserables. Espero, espero que el testimonio de la concejal aborde este problema y rechazar que ellos se pongan en esta cuestión. Es cuestión de dignidad. Thank you.
And thank you. I will say, Fabian Marita Cruz, your testimony, I don't think you have the best connection, so I would just encourage you to submit your testimony in writing so we can make sure we include it in the record for the hearing. Okay. Yeah. All right. Our next witness is Rosalba Rodriguez Santos. Good afternoon to you. Thanks for joining this hearing. You can begin your testimony. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Gracias al concejal McDuffie y a los miembros del comité por esta, por esta oportunidad de testificar. Mi nombre es Rosalba Rodriguez. Vivo en la zona dos. Soy cocinera y he trabajado en la industria restaurante durante dieciséis años. Y desde hace cinco años he estado recibiendo propinas. Estoy aquí para testificar en contra del proyecto de ley propuesto por McDuffie que amenaza con destruir la iniciativa ochenta y dos aprobada por los votantes, que consiste en aumentar lentamente los salarios de los trabajadores que reciben propinas para igualar el salario mínimo regular. Como trabajadora de un restaurante, mis compañeros y yo tenemos, tememos que nuestros salarios se vean afectados si se aprueba este proyecto de ley. Los cargos por servicio ya son confusos para los clientes que piensan que es lo mismo que una propina. Este proyecto de ley alentaría a los restaurantes a implementar cargos por servicio a gran escala y disminuiría la transparencia y la responsabilidad tanto para los clientes como para los trabajadores. Los restaurantes, los restaurantes no deben depender de los cargos por servicio para pagarnos un salario base y no se les debe obligar a los consumidores a usar este sistema para reemplazar las propinas. Los, me preocupa que haya una desigualdad de salario entre mis compañeros y que no haya una claridad en cómo se reparten las propinas porque muchos consumidores tienden a no dejar propina y cuando dejan, no hay una manera de identificar esa propina porque está el servicio de cargo. Soy un profesional calificado y merezco que mi empleador me pague el salario mínimo regular y aún así recibir propinas. No deberíamos dar a los restaurantes un trato especial y obligar a los clientes a pagar nuestros salarios base. Espero que mi testimonio ayude al consejo a abordar este problema y rechazar el proyecto de ley propuesto. Es una cuestión de dignidad. Muchas gracias por escucharme.
And thank you for your testimony this afternoon.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Francisca Tejeda. Good afternoon to you. Thanks for being here. You can begin your testimony. You have three minutes.
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias al concejal McDuffie y a los, y a los miembros del comité por esta oportunidad de testificar. Mi nombre es Francisca Tejeda. Vivo en la zona dos. Trabajo de cocinera y he trabajado en la industria de restaurantes durante ocho años. Estoy aquí para testificar en contra del proyecto de ley propuesto por McDuffie que amenaza con destruir la iniciativa ochenta y dos aprobada por los votantes, la cual consiste en aumentar lentamente los salarios de los trabajadores que reciben propinas para igualar el salario mínimo regular. Como trabajadora, he notado estos servicios de cargos y es muy confuso porque no sé si ese servicio de cargo va para los trabajadores o para el restaurante. Y me preocupa que los trabajadores no tengan un buen salario. Soy un profesional calificado y todos los trabajadores merecemos que nuestro empleador nos trate con dignidad. No deberíamos dar a los restaurantes un trato especial y obligar a los clientes a pagar nuestro salario base. Espero que mi testimonio, mi testimonio ayude al consejo a abordar este problema y rechazar el proyecto de ley propuesto. Es una cuestión de dignidad. Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your testimony. The next witness who's joined is Mary Pinzon. Good afternoon to you. Thanks for joining, and you can begin your testimony.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Pinzon Paredes. Gracias al concejal McDuffie y a los miembros del comité por esta oportunidad de testificar. Vivo en la zona cuatro. Trabajo de cocinera y he trabajado en la industria de restaurantes durante quince años. Estoy aquí para testificar con, contra del proyecto de ley propuesto por McDuffie que amenaza con destruir la iniciativa ochenta y dos aprobada por los votantes, la cual consiste en aumentar lentamente los salarios de los trabajadores que reciben propinas para igualar el salario mínimo regular. Como trabajadora, he notado estos servicios de cargos y es muy confuso porque no sé si ese servicio de cargo va para los trabajadores o para el restaurante. Y me preocupa que los trabajadores no tengan un buen salario. Soy un profesional calificado. Todos los trabajadores merecemos que nuestro empleador nos trate con dignidad. No deberíamos dar a los restaurantes un, un trato especial y obligar a los clientes a pagar nuestros salarios base. Espero, espero que mi testimonio ayude al consejo a abordar este problema y rechazar el proyecto de ley propuesto. Es una cuestión de dignidad.
Thank you for your testimony this afternoon. Our next witness on the list is Elliot Becker. Good afternoon to you, and you can begin your testimony. You'll have three minutes to testify.
Thank you, council member. I'm here representing the People's Parity Project, D.C. Lawyers Chapter. We're an organization working for social justice in D.C., primarily composed of lawyers. We're here in solidarity with the other organizations and people opposing this amendment, which contravenes the will of the D.C. voters and is bad for working people in D.C. We stand in support of the Unions and Restaurant Opportunities Center and D.C. Jobs with Justice and all other organizations opposing this bill. And I applaud Kes' comments earlier on this panel. I will say that though our membership is primarily composed of lawyers now, a number of our members at a recent meeting spoke about their experience, experiences prior to becoming lawyers, working as servers and only getting the tipped minimum wage and how detrimental that was for their lives and how they, how much they were looking forward to Initiative eighty-two coming into effect and their opposition to, to this amendment. So I, I would ask that this amendment not be passed. I am opposing, we are opposing it, and that's my entire testimony. Thank you.
And thank you for your testimony this afternoon. The next witness on our list that we have joining us this afternoon is Sophia Miyoshi. Good afternoon to you, and you can begin your testimony. I'll make one final call for Sophia Miyoshi. It appears that you are with us on the Zoom. If you'd like to testify, you can unmute yourself and turn on your video and begin your testimony. Okay, all right. Good afternoon. You can begin your testimony. Thanks for joining.
Thank you. My name is Sophia Miyoshi. I'm testifying on behalf of the Restaurant Opportunity Center of Washington, D.C. And I will be completing our joint testimony that Helen had begun. As, as we fear, the bill possesses two main issues. This bill will not only impact workers, it will also impact all customers and consumers traveling in and through the D.C. area. Earlier this year, on March two thousand twenty-three, after being notified by many anonymous reports from consumers around the confusion of service charges, the Office of Attorney Generals held a meeting detailing the consumer protection laws and how restaurants, how restaurants can easily be in compliance of this law, and were very clear that they would be enforcing the implementation of these laws after a short grace period. I would like to emphasize that these consumer protection laws are not new and apply across all industries and businesses. Any and all people deserve to know where their hard-earned money is going. Thus, what this bill is requesting is essentially lessening the enforcement of pieces of the consumer protections, which in our opinion shows preferential treatment to the employers over the workers. While I'm not an expert in the ins and outs of the consumer protections laws, Adam from the Office of Attorney Generals is set to testify at the end, and I highly encourage the council to hear his testimony as well as work closely with the Office of Attorney General to understand this matter fully. Lastly, I would like to address briefly the bias and the desire for a third party to do. for a third party to do research on the current landscape of the restaurant industry and what would be best for restaurant workers. This research has been done many times over the years. Oldest one in our current possession being in twenty thirteen, done by a group of lawyers as well in twenty fourteen by the Lawyers Committee of Civil Rights under the law. Not including the one funded by the mayor's office to be done in twenty twenty. That was done in twenty twenty. We would be happy to share all of these with the council at a later date. Actually, after this testimony. It is highly upsetting for workers to see that the council is entertaining a bill that directly threatens their source of income while also entirely disregarding the will of voters. I hope that the council will choose to reject this bill and it is in its plan to knowingly create a situation where it is exponentially harder to ensure that workers will get paid with dignity. Thank you and.
And thank you for your testimony. That's the last public witness we have before we transition to government witnesses. I wanted to just ask, you know, ask Sophia Miyoshi since she was the last to testify and if any of the restaurant workers, current workers wants to testify or answer this question. You know, when you all hear restaurant owners or operators talk about the challenges with the way that Initiative eighty-two is currently in the law and the challenges they would have with implementing it as it's in the law, the incremental raises in prices because of the incremental wage increases, as Clyde Roberts Glaze put it. How do you respond? Do you think, do you not believe that there are challenges that owners and operators face in implementing Initiative eighty-two as currently outlined in the law?
I will answer for us.
Sure.
I understand your question. Inflation has hit businesses and consumers pretty hard. I cannot deny that the result of the pandemic resulted in a lot of restaurants closing and many restaurant workers losing their job. And with not as many restaurants and restaurant workers, like not as many restaurants for restaurant workers, many chose to move on. However, since we still can't ignore the fact that restaurant workers primarily rely on paying their bills for tips and it is still the only industry of all industries in which the employer is not directly responsible for paying its employee. Let me say that again, only industry in its existence in which the employer is not directly responsible for paying the wages of their employee. That comes from the consumers, that comes from tips. And while I, while I understand your concern, it again just seems like another level of preferential treatment where in other states, one fair wage has worked. And I am honestly advocating on behalf of the many restaurant workers who could not testify today because they have to work, because they can't choose between advocating for their rights and paying for their bills. This restaurant industry is filled with many folks who are disenfranchised and still living below the poverty.
Can you hear me talking to you?
So restaurants and the hospitality industry in the city is a life and blood and heart. We put in so much money into the city with tourists and folks throughout the D M V. So in my opinion, we should really value our restaurant hospitality workers because at the end of the day, they don't deserve just crumbs and tips. They deserve a full salary for putting back into the city as being the second largest employer right under the federal government. Thank you.
Okay, I take it you couldn't hear me trying to ask your question? Maybe you can't. Yeah, it seems like you can't hear. Can you hear me talking to you?
I can hear you now, councilman.
Oh, okay. Did you hear my question?
No, I did not, sir. Alright.
Okay, let me pose it to somebody else then. Because I think it's, I'm sorry?
You can repeat the question. I'm happy to answer. Your mic was just turned off.
Well, actually, my mic was turned on. I'm not sure. It must be like a communication issue on.
Yeah, happy to answer your question.
Well, no, it's fine. I'll ask somebody else. It's okay. Maybe Kesha would like to answer that question about. And I'd like to get Clyde Roberts Glaze just to sort of weigh in as well. I think, you know, my question to the workers who believe that this will not really fulfill the intent behind Initiative eighty-two is a question that I think speaks to my thinking in terms of introducing this legislation, that it actually does get to the goal of Initiative eighty-two and it does so two years earlier. So it gets restaurant workers to the full minimum wage in twenty twenty-five rather than two years later as outlined in Initiative eighty-two. And so I wanted, maybe if Kesha, let her head is still with us, just to answer that question that I asked about the challenges that restaurant owners and operators face with Initiative eighty-two as currently drafted. Do you not see that as a challenge in terms of implementation for them? And have you had opportunity to talk to any restaurant owners or operators about it?
Chair McDuffie, thanks for the opportunity. So I also agree with Helen's comments that one fair wage is a challenge to the restaurant industry because it is the only industry that is not held to the same standards of minimum wages as other industries. This, when the voters of D C passed Initiative seventy-seven and Initiative eighty-two, the voters were saying that the restaurant industry needs to, over a period of time and in a gradual manner, come into conformance with every other industry in this city.
Kesha, can I ask you a question? Because it actually would have them come into compliance.
Yes, I am going to that, that particular point, a council member which you have raised a number of times. So the way I see it, if you are sincerely interested in improving the implementation of I eighty-two as opposed to undermining and destroying I eighty-two, you would have invited the organizations and activists who championed one fair wage, Restaurant Opportunity Center, one fair wage, D C Jobs with Justice, labor unions and so forth. You would have invited those organizations and activists to, to, to.
Have you talked to any of the restaurant owners or operators?
No, it's clear that you have talked to the restaurant industry, sir. This bill is obviously.
I'm asking, have you though? Have you talked to anybody who owns or operates a restaurant about implementing Initiative eighty-two?
No, I have not because I am standing squarely with the workers on this issue.
I understand.
But your attempt to make it sound like this bill is, is, is trying to help with the implementation of I eighty-two is clearly, I mean, we all know what's going on here.
I think you assumed you know what's going on. I think that's part of the challenge. I wanted to hear from Clyde Roberts Glaze, who it sounds like in your testimony, you and your husband used to be restaurant workers.
Yes.
You're now owners, operators, and you see challenges with the way that Initiative eighty-two would be implemented and you support this bill. Maybe you can do a better job of explaining to Kesha, let her head in others who I think are cynical of the approach taken in this bill.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, my interest is not in eradicating I eighty-two. I am a former tipped wage employee. And I want my people to have work-life balance. I want them to have a living wage. We provide insurance to our staff. We provide time off when they are ill, even when they're not eligible for F M L A or anything like that. We. I eighty-two as written, while a lot of people would say that it's very incremental. It's, it's not incremental enough for a business model that has been set up this way since its inception. We've, it has been a tipped wage model in many parts of the country since their inception. It's the only other places that have gone to minimum wage being the same, whether you're tipped or not, are places with low, lower minimum wage. And also, you know, it's happened a number of years ago. We had a wage increase. We've had wage increases every single year since, I think, two thousand ten. We've striven to not raise our prices to, you know, to only raise them as much as possible to stay solvent because we don't want to scare away the tourists that we depend upon, the families that we depend upon, that, you know, that it's better to have a little bit from them than nothing at all. But going from, gosh, I think it was eight dollars in two thousand ten was the, the minimum wage, which I agree, like needed to be raised, but we're going from that to seventeen dollars or higher. You know, two dollars every year for years. I don't want to charge a service charge. I don't want that to be something that I have to do, but it's either, at this point, it's either do that or stop operating. And, and I have conversations with my staff over and over again about, you know, what, what is your, you know, what, what are your all's thoughts? What do you think the best way to handle this is? You know, what would you think if we just raised the prices to, you know, to be in line with what cover the wage increases? And, you know, I don't, there's not, there's not a good answer. But if it's all, if we're doing it all in one chunk, then the big restaurant groups and the big chains will have to be on the same playing field as a small independent operators. Where a dollar, two dollars an hour for all my staff? I mean, that's, that's, that's the difference between, you know, staying solvent. You know, we're not even profitable. I mean, post-COVID, like it's not like I'm trying to make a million dollars. Even in a, in a good year, we wouldn't have but maybe eight percent of profit based on how, based on how the business model of a restaurant works with the thin margins that we have. Sorry, I'm running on and.
No, I appreciate it. But I, but I thought it was important to provide that perspective. I think what I'm hearing from several of the witnesses are, you know, support of Initiative eighty-two and I know a lot of people worked hard to get it passed and they want it seen in a minute in the way that it was passed. And whether they understand or not, I, I, I get where they're coming from. This is a proposal. It's a bill introduced. Not guaranteed to go into law, but it's meant to have this sort of hearing and hear from people with points of view on either side of an issue. And so I, I think it's important to make sure that, that your perspective is represented as is the perspective of people who work in the industry, restaurant workers and, and the advocacy groups who are testifying as well. Now, there was testimony from one of the witnesses that said that, you know, this bill would incentivize restaurants to switch to a service charge model. My understanding in conversations that I'm having with people in the industry, workers, owners, operators, a lot of restaurants have already done that. And they're doing that because they feel like they, they have to move in that direction. I don't know if you have conversations with your colleagues and, and people who own and operate the independently owned ones in the district, really are the ones that I'm talking about here and the ones that I've been communicating with, not the big chains. What's your experience? What are you hearing about the service charge or mandatory gratuity?
I mean, the people.
Kind of oxymoronic because I don't.
I know, man, I know. Yeah, it can't be, actually, man, can't be mandatory since it's, but, but yeah. I mean, the, the independent places are, are having to institute some sort of service charges. There's, there's definitely a, a switch or it varies whether they're jumping all the way to doing a twenty-two percent or staying in the low. We're starting a service charge later this week that will be, I think, the number we, we settled on that would, would make it work would be six percent so that it would be, and, you know, be clear about what it's being used for so that hopefully folks will not think that they need to, to tip less. And we'll reevaluate that and see, you know, a month down the road to see how it affects, how it affects everybody's bottom line, how it affects my staff, you know, whether their take-home income goes down or not. But I think that that's, you know, we're balancing the increase because everybody, all the big places are doing service charges or most of them are. We're balancing like on paper, when you look at our prices, if we're raising things to, raising the menu prices to cover the wages entirely, then, then it looks like we're charging way more than everybody else. And they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't know until they got in the door. And because unfortunately, nobody, nobody's like looking at your website and like reading all the fine print and like, hey, this is, there's no mandatory service charges or whatever. Because we're all across the country, we're all attuned to knowing that you're going to give an extra, you know, ten, twenty, two percent.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to turn to Rosalba Rodriguez Santos.
Yes, I'm her interpreter, Miguel. So I was, we were, she was talking to us and, and she, she was telling me that it was great.
You want to go ahead and let her say it and then you can interpret it? That might be, just make sure we get it an accurate.
Okay, she told me to say it because she used to write it down. So she think, she thought that it was great to hear the.
Just to be clear, she, she is, you're testifying on her behalf or your own behalf at this point? Because she testified earlier.
Her behalf. She wrote her points and she.
Oh, got it. Okay, I understand. I understand. Go ahead.
So she thinks that it's great to hear from the perspective of Clay, but also she feels that the perspective of the workers are not being respected because obviously workers are telling you, she is a worker and she feels that it is confusing for customers when they leave the service charge. And a lot of the times, people don't leave tips anymore, anymore. So at the end, it's, she thinks that it's confusing for her because she doesn't know she's getting tips, but she's not getting any tips and there is no transparency on the restaurant. On where the service charge goes.
Does the restaurant where she works, do they currently use a service charge?
They do.
They do? Okay. How long she worked there?
Also, right now.
How long does she work there?
For how long? I've traveled.
Oh, for sixteen years, almost seventeen.
Oh, wow.
Years.
Wow, okay. Go ahead. You gonna say something?
Eh, cuánto tiempo el salario?
Four hours, six years.
So she's, right now, she's getting paid six, six dollars an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
She was, she.
The tip minimum goes up on Saturday to eight dollars an hour.
Eight dollars an hour.
She's aware of that, I'm sure.
Yes, but now she's, she's confused because. She's confused because uh with the service charge, she's, is, she thinks that she's not gonna be able to see her tips anymore. She, if she was getting paid eight dollars an hour, she's not gonna be able to survive and then there is no transparency or clarity, whether she's.
Does she?
Tips or like, her charge are gonna help her. Her situation, um, and also no, no, all the restaurants do the same thing as. Uh, the restaurant that Clay is doing, that is providing those benefits. No, all the restaurants are the same. No, all the restaurants are able to provide all of that. Um. So her and her family are like afraid that she's not gonna be able to make it because they had to pay the. The li- living situation and you see, which is really high. Uh, expenses, uh, since take the child to the daycare to be able to. So there is a lot of things happening at the same time that have, that she's fear that she is not even to even survive this, this change.
I mean, I've heard that a lot and I appreciate her sharing that. Um, personal story and, and her experience. You know, the, what this bill would do, and I think one of the concerns that. Um. I've heard consistently from advocates. Is that moving the implementation of Initiative eighty-two up two years and getting. Restaurant workers their full. Minimum wage two years earlier would not be a good thing. They think that it would make it more difficult, or some feel like it's a cynical attempt on my behalf or, you know, restaurant owners and operators' behalf. To undermine Initiative eighty-two, and what I'm saying, speaking for myself only, is, is, is that, is not what I am intending to do with this bill. And it actually is designed to help restaurant workers recognizing that restaurant owners and operators. Think that this is a more efficient way to implement Initiative eighty-two, and I saw it as a win-win. Does Rosalba? Think it's a bad idea to move up? The full minimum wage? To twenty twenty-five and get the full. Uh, minimum wage two years earlier? You wanna unmute yourself so we can hear what you're saying?
So I'm explaining to her in Spanish so she can, uh, give her a clara, clear answer.
Yeah. Yeah, I have some Spanish speaking staff here too, so I just want to make sure I, I, we heard the record is clear. She doesn't happen to answer, by the way. I just wanted to ask the question, so she doesn't, she shouldn't feel any pressure to answer my question at all.
Yeah, she, she will think about it. Um.
Okay.
One thing that she also just mentioned to me to say is that she would like to see more representation on workers. Um, especially the.
She just mentioned that to you?
Yeah, the, the, the Latino population, because that is. A lot of for workers are not being represented to.
And she, she should feel free to speak in Spanish if she, if she liked, she should feel free to speak in Spanish. It's okay for that to be a part, and frankly, I, I encourage that to be a part of the record.
Que, que, que tú le diste la idea de que tenga más representación.
Sí.
Ah, que se, que se lo puedes decir.
And, and if she wants to follow up, that's fine too. If she, if she, if she's more comfortable following up. Later on, we can do it, you know.
Oh, sí.
Uh, offline and not at the hearing, but I wanted to give her the opportunity to speak. Now in Spanish, if she would prefer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, que si quieres, sí, sí, oh, yes, yes, please, sí.
Pero, ¿puedes decir en español?
Si, a ver, sí, eh, la verdad, sí quiero que me representen en español, para mí sería mucho mejor. Y para mis buenos compañeros y amigos.
That, yeah, please, I would encourage you to represent yourself in Spanish. That's, that's absolutely fine. Is there anything else that you'd like to say for the record right now?
Uh, no, 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 for now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I want to thank all the witnesses who provided testimony today. Uh, we really appreciate you all. Especially given that, uh, the hearing was recessed. Um, for you all to be able to make time, uh, to come back to the committee and provide testimony, uh, means a lot, so thank you for that. Next, we are going to turn to our government witness. There we go. I got my documents a little confused here. We're gonna turn to our. Here we go. We have a representative from the Office of the Attorney General, uh, the Office of the Consumer Protection. Adam Titlebaum, uh, we appreciate your patience this afternoon and thank you for being able to join us. You can begin your testimony.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman McDuffie. Council members.
Before you begin, be- before you begin, I, I almost neglected to swear you in, so it's been the practice of the committee, uh, this council period to swear in all government witnesses, so if you could, raise your right hand before you get going. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide before the Council of the District of Columbia? And the Committee on Business and Economic Development is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks again. You can begin.
Thank you again, uh, Chairman McDuffie, and good afternoon to you, uh, council members, staff, and residents of the district. Uh, again, my name's Adam Titlebaum. I'm the Director of the Office of Consumer Protection. In the Public Advocacy Division of the Office of the Attorney General for the District of Columbia or OAG. Uh, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on behalf of OAG. On Bill twenty-five zero two eighty, the Workers and Restaurants Our Priorities Act of twenty twenty-three. And in offering these comments, uh, just want to note that we are very mindful at OAG. Uh, that restaurants, like so many businesses in our country, have struggled significantly during the pandemic. Um, and we fully and wholly support efforts by council. To ensure a vibrant restaurant industry in the district for the benefit of. You know, restaurants, restaurant owners, uh, consumers, uh, diners, um, and, and of course, restaurant workers. Uh, and we've listened to and very much appreciate. The testimony from the wide range and many public witnesses who've testified at this hearing both today and a couple of weeks ago. As well as the very thoughtful question posed by, uh, questions posed by you, uh, Chairman McDuffie, as well as other council members. And, and one thing that I think we can all agree. Um, is clear, is that none of us want. Uh, to undermine key protections afforded to consumers and service workers under existing district laws, even as we. Um, attempt to assist the restaurant industry in this transitional time. Um, and so that's why I, I appreciate this opportunity to address. Uh, the concerns that our office has as to sections three and four of the bill as it's currently written, uh, which I'm going to summarize in my testimony today. Um. Just to take a, first take a step back, I, I think to fully consider the impacts of the bill, um, it should be viewed in the context of the district's. Uh, Consumer Protection Procedures Act, the CPPA, as we use in short, as we call it in shorthand. Um, which in, in broad terms is a law that, uh, requires businesses to. Timely and adequately disclose information to their consumers. That their consumers would consider important when, uh, making a decision to purchase goods or services. Um, and the CPPA applies to all merchants doing businesses, doing business in the district, i- including restaurants. And in recent months, our office has learned that. Diners in the district have become increasingly confused about service charges that they're seeing, you know, increasingly pop up. Um, as they're dining out, and in particular confused about whether those service charges function as tips. Uh, so in an effort to address that confusion, uh, our office issued guidance both to restaurants as well as to consumers, confirming two key things. Uh, one, that restaurants are required to disclose the existence. And the amount of any fees before consumers place their orders. Um, so that people will know what they're going to be charged. And two, that restaurants must disclose the purposes of the, the fees. They charge, uh, so that consumers can make informed decisions, including about whether and how much to tip. Um, in other words, making sure people know what they're being charged for. Um. To be crystal clear, our guidance does not require, and, and our position is that the law does not require. Restaurant owners to treat service fees as tips. Um, we, we believe, uh, restaurants can treat their service fees and use them in any way they so choose. But that the law requires them to be clear and transparent with their consumers as to how those fees will be used. Um, we received, uh, positive feedback from restaurant patrons as well as district resident, uh, restaurants. Who welcomed our guidance as a measure that would level the playing field between the many restaurants that are already disclosing those fees. Uh, in a compliant manner, um, but to level the playing field between those restaurants and those that are charging their fees. Um, in an ambiguous way. So, you know, given that critical role that the CPPA plays in protecting district consumers from these sorts of deceptive and unfair trade practices. We wanted to highlight our three main concerns, uh, with section three and four of the bill. Um, the first is that the bill would change when and how a service fee must be disclosed. Uh, and as I mentioned, restaurant services are treated the exact same as fees in every other industry. In that consumers must be adequately informed about them. At the beginning of a transaction, and our concern is that the bill would create a special carve-out to the CPPA for restaurant service fees. By attempting to legislate what counts as adequate disclosure. And in, in an industry comprised of thousands of operators that do business in so many different ways. Um, and particularly concerning, and Chairman McDuffie, I know you've, you've, uh, highlighted this as an area that. Um, you had already noted, uh, you know, being willing to, to reconsider. Um, but we did have concerns with the disclosure standards themselves in the bill, which would allow a restaurant to bury fee disclosures in fine print on a menu or even. Place it on an obscure page of a website where consumers in reality are just not likely to actually see and understand them. Um, the result being what I think all of us want to avoid, which is surprise fees that people don't. Uh, see until the bill comes, if at all. Our, our second concern is that the bill. Would relieve restaurants of the obligation, again, under the CPPA, to disclose to consumers how they will use the proceeds. Of service charges. Um, information that we know because we've heard for consumers is very important to people because it. Uh, helps inform whether and how much they choose to tip their service worker. And we, we note that the bill defines a service charge as a mandatory charge. That is used to pay base wages of the employees of the vendor. That means that the fee does not need to be given to workers in addition to their base wages like a tip would. And, you know, something we wanted to highlight that hasn't come up, uh, much in the public testimony. Is that as we read the language, the fee could even be used to pay the salaries of managers, and even in the case of. Um, you know, a corporate, you know, uh, restaurant group could be used to pay corporate staff. Uh, executives, et cetera, as well. And so our concern is that not only does the bill eliminate this very important CPPA requirement that. Restaurants tell their diners what their fees are being used for, but it actually affirmatively allows them. Uh, restaurants to use the fees in a way. Uh, that we're concerned is, in a way that many consumers are not expecting the fees to be used. And third and finally, our concerns are further compounded by section four of the bill. Which, uh, would exempt service charges of up to twenty-two percent from being taxed as sales revenue. And we want to flag. Something that has been flagged in some of the public testimony, which is that this does create a very strong incentive. For every district resident, uh, restaurant to begin charging twenty-two percent service fees. Including for the many that we know currently today are not charging service fees, or those that are maybe charging. Um, the, the, or soon to be charging the six percent service fee like the witness we just heard from, it's gonna be creating incentive that. Restaurants across the board raise their, number one, start charging service fees and raise that service fee at twenty-two percent to take full advantage of the tax advantages. Um, and so our concern is that coupling the tax exemption and, and making it contingent on charging a service fee. Again, service fees that we know are already causing consumer confusion is only going to lead to more confusion. And in addition, as the White House has recently noted, add-on fees like service charges, they're irritating to many consumers. They make it difficult for people to compare prices, and they can cause real harm where consumers end up being charged more than they expected, more than they, they budget for. So in other words, even if service char- service charges are adequately disclosed and explained. We, we ask the council carefully consider the consequences and incentives of legislating tax relief. That would effectively encourage the proliferation of service fees. Um, and I want to be crystal clear, our office, OAG, takes no issue at all and would support. Policy decisions to legislate tax relief or other direct relief that benefits restaurants. Um, but we would strongly urge the council to consider the incentives created by tying that sort of relief. And making it contingent on restaurants imposing service fees to consumers. Um. So in conclusion, I mentioned, like the council, OAG supports the growth and success of the district's restaurant industry. That's why we issued guidance that would. You know, we had hoped would assist their recovery from the pandemic years, help them navigate what we all recognize as a difficult and transitional phase. Um, out of the tipped minimum wage. Um, but we also believe it's critical that. All restaurants are competing on a level playing field, both within the industry and with. The rules of the road that apply to every other industry that does business in the district, and that those rules be uniformly followed. And one thing I want to highlight is that. Um, to alleviate any lingering confusion among restaurant owners, as well as any continuing confusion, confusion among consumers. Our office is preparing to supplement the guidance we previously issued by publishing specific examples. That illustrate exactly how restaurants can disclose and charge service fees. In a manner that fully complies with the district's consumer protection laws, so that restaurants have every tool they need to comply with the laws currently written. Um, but again, to the extent the council wishes to subsidize restaurants, which we believe is an, a, a laudable goal. We would urge, again, council to do that in a direct manner and not through legislation that may have the effect. Of providing those subsidies, subsidies at the expense of consumers or ultimately, um, at the expense of our hardworking service employees. Uh, so I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak about our concerns as the sections three and four of this bill, and I welcome any questions, uh, that the committee may have.
And thank you, uh, for your testimony, Mr. Titlebaum. I, I want to pick up where you just left off. Uh, you mentioned that you all are gonna, uh, provide, um, uh, as requested by the committee. Um, some examples. For the consumer alert that you provided. Can you preview any of those examples at this point?
We're still, uh, I don't want to sort of get ahead of my skis. We're still working on them internally and making sure. Um. You know, we're fully, you know, comfortable with the examples and that they're compliant with the law. And this is, uh, I should note, this is a step we've, we've never taken before in terms of providing specific examples of sort of do's and don'ts, and so we. Want to make sure we get it right. Um.
Okay.
But what, but what I can say is, and, you know, I think. Um, it'll be consistent with the guidance we already. Um. We already issued, which is essentially, you know, we're not saying at all that the law. Is dictating to restaurants what fees they can and can't charge, or what they can do with that money. It's all about transparency. And in this circumstance of service charge, it's really about making clear to consumers that this isn't a tip. Because we've heard time and time again, consumers see service charge, they think it's a tip, and so, you know, having clear disclosures that this isn't a tip, we think is the key to avoiding any confusion.
Right, and I appreciate that, and, uh, as I, uh, previously conversed with the Attorney General about some aspects of the bill and. You know, where you might place, uh, the language about the service charge, we, we are certainly open to modifying that. Um. In terms of your reading of the bill, I think I heard you mention it, characterize it as a subsidy to the restaurants? Um, is that correct?
No, I, I, I guess what I had, uh, what, what we understand the bill to be, uh, doing is, um. At least providing an indirect form of relief. And our concern is that it is, it is providing a form of tax relief through a, through a partial tail, uh, sales tax exemption. But tying it to imposing service charges, and so we would suggest a, a more direct way to provide a relief would be some sort of direct subsidy or direct tax relief. Rather than making a contingent on. Rather than making a contingent on a restaurant charging a service fee.
Got it, got it. And 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 just in your experience, is your office. I I I I assume that you are hearing from consumers and and others to in order. Provide a basis for you to put out a consumer alert. Um, how many formal complaints, to your knowledge, has your office received regarding um restaurant service charges? Prior to issuing your service alert?
I'm not, I'm not sure I've got the numbers on like on broken up between before and after. I know overall, we've received in excess of a hundred. Um, directly to our office and and indirectly learned of of dozens, if not. More than that. And and that really was the impetus for us issuing this guidance is we had heard. Time and time again, and that this was enough of of an issue that we felt that we um we couldn't ignore it.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And 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 your offices work on formulating the consumer alert. Were you aware of any complaints? Or concerns raised at any other agencies within the District of Columbia? Uh, my thought is that, you know, maybe there's some something that came in at Department of Licensing or D C R A as a predecessor agency. Are you aware of any complaints there?
Um, we we had, we had not been aware of any complaints made uh through either D C R A or D L C P. Um, they they may very well have, but they they didn't come to my attention.
Okay, all right. Um, they play a role in enforcement of consumer protection laws to a certain extent as well? In the district?
Oh, un- undoubtedly, yes. And and we've um, you know, we. Uh, our office has worked closely with the predecessor agency D C R A and and we've had a very good and productive relationship with the new agency. Uh, Department of Licensing and Consumer Protection or D L C P, we have dual enforcement roles. Uh, under in enforcing the exact same law, the CPPA, and, you know, we have different tools for doing so. They have more administrative uh functions, we have more litigation and enforcement functions, but we coordinate quite closely. And um, uh, I believe D L C P, while they're not uh testifying. Um, orally today, I believe they've submitted some written testimony that does raise some similar concerns that that we have with the bill as written.
They 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 definitely submitted some written testimony. Do you know uh if D S L B uh, D L C P? If the acronym correct, uh, do you know if uh i- if they've taken any action in terms of the service fees? Um, and I don't expect you to know all the answers, but maybe there was some coordination between the two agencies in terms of. Um, the concerns around deceptive service fees?
Um, I don't know that they've taken any um, I don't believe they've taken any action. We certainly made them aware of the guidance that we issued. I've had conversations with the enforcement folks at D L C P, um, including including about the bill. And I think in in sort of broad strokes, we we share the same view. I don't want to speak for D L C P, but it's sort of in broad strokes. Um, agree with what the CPPA uh requires in terms of disclosure.
Uh, okay, all right. And so. I would want to make sure that to extent, you know, there are. Things that are being shared with the public, at least. Uh, to know that there's some some consultation going on between the two agencies that have purview over uh the C C P A. Uh, I know you all had a um. I think a call. I don't know if it was shortly before or shortly after you issued your consumer alert. Do you remember whether it was before or after?
It was after, I think it was about two weeks after we held a webinar um organized by the Restaurant Association. Uh, of of Metro Washington, as well as a number of their members that attended.
Okay, okay. And I think um. I'm sure I have it somewhere, but as I recall, the uh D L C P's testimony that they provided to the committee on this bill. Um, they supported, you know, some of the changes to the C C P A, though, as I recall it. They had some suggestions that would, in their opinion, strengthen the disclosure, including requiring that the fee be disclosed in writing. Um, I think my staff had had told me, and and maybe you can speak to this a little bit, you all had advised some restaurants on that call. Um, that under the current law, they could disclose verbally. And I think you may have given an example about like they were in a crowded bar and a patron wasn't ordering off the menu. Is that something that you recall? Is that is that correct? Part of this is just really trying to give some guidance to people. Who want to obey and follow the law, but have, I think, sincere and genuine concerns about how to do that.
Absolutely, and and Chairman McDuffie, I I completely agree. We, the whole goal of of going this route of guidance was really. We want to give the restaurant industry all the tools they need so that they can comply. Um, and we want to take that collaborative educational approach and not, and for all all the good reasons we've talked about in terms of the struggles of the restaurant industry. Not take a sledgehammer type approach. Um, and to your to your question. I I think that goes to an important point of how the CPPA is structured and and why it is a broad and flexible statute. Is that I think for good reason, it does not dictate with specificity. How particular industries need to disclose information to their consumers. And so the point I was trying to make in the webinar. Is that context matters. And so. You know, we really view the restaurants as the experts in how to convey information to consumers. You know, they know how to do that every single day. They know how to make sure that their prices are conveyed to consumers. They know how to make sure that they convey. What their specials are, what uh items might not be available that day. And and. In many ways, we don't, we want to make sure the law remains flexible and that we're not tying restaurants' hands in exactly how they disclose this information. A rule of thumb that we've told, we've told folks time and time again, that really is, I I hope can give restaurants comfort. Um, is if you disclose your service fee and the information about it in the exact same way you disclose your price. You're you're in the clear. And so I think the example I had mentioned is, let's say you're at the bar and there are no prices listed at all. Um, and a a consumer, you know, asks, hey, what, you know, what is a beer cost? That it would be on the restaurant to explain, to to convey the total cost, including the service fee if it's a mandatory service fee. Um, but, you know, it it really does depend on context. I think, you know, all of us remember, you know, five years ago. Or, you know, certainly ten years ago, none of us would have envisioned this world in which we're ordering from Q R codes. Um, on many restaurants. And so the the law is currently written as flexible, and all it requires is that restaurants. Try to make, basically make the information available in a way that people will see it. And so if it's a Q R code and everyone has to look at the Q R code and it's prominently disclosed at the beginning of the Q R, uh, you know, on the Q R uh menu. That also, we believe, would be adequate under current law. And that and I, that's the point we were trying to convey at the webinar.
Got it, got it. And um. I think you all, in your testimony here today, um, oppose defining service charges in the law. Because, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so please, you know, correct me if I mixed characterize this, but. You all think it would be more confusing for consumers if you define it.
Um, so that's a, that's a good question, and and I should clarify uh, clarify our point on that, Chairman McDuffie. I think our, so our principal concern is the way that service charges are defined, and that we believe in the current bill, it's actually defined. Contrary to what actually most people would expect. Um, but we also believe, while there may be a benefit to defining service charges, doing it as a carve out. From the CPPA and what would be the very first immunity under the CPPA, and certainly the first industry practice specific. Um, uh, immunity, it would not be the route we'd recommend. Um, as opposed to, you know, a separate provision perhaps that defines service charges.
So, in in terms of, you know, the thought, in terms of how you define it, it really was. Uh, because if 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 you view it as contrary to what, you know, I think most people would think, we sort of looked at. How it is defined in the federal law. I mean, and and just trying to look at some model for some guidance. And so. The thought was a legal definition of service charge combined with a public education campaign would actually make things less confusing. Do you all disagree with that, though? Given that it's both, it's, so it's both the definition and this um education campaign?
So, so that's something we talked a bit about with the restaurants on uh on the web, at the webinar. And our concern is that, and I, we totally understand sort of where where the. What the impetus was for the language, and we understand the I R S federal definition. The real, the real concern we have is that reasonable consumers have no idea how the I R S defines a service charge. And so the the main concern is that the bill defines service charges in a way. Be- because the reality is people hear service, they see a charge that's, you know, eighteen to twenty-two percent, and so many people think tip. And so all we're saying is that the onus is on the restaurant to correct that misimpression and just make clear that it's not a tip. And so defining a service charge in a way that's maybe different than people um, people wouldn't expect is not ne- is not. Nearly as problematic on its own, but it, but the problem is that the current bill also does not require restaurants to explain what the service fee is used for. And so a public education campaign, we're we're all for. We don't think, though, that that's a eh an adequate substitute. For the restaurants just conveying that information directly. We think it's, we think it could be both. Let's, you know, why not a public education campaign that tells people, you know, what what restaurants are doing with these fees as well as. You know, let's have it come from the source so that everyone sitting down is hearing directly from the restaurant. Oh, by the way, you know, it's as simple as, by the way, this is not a tip. Um, and you're free to 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 tip your server on top of this if you so choose. And that's some, another point we wanted to raise is that. We're just saying the info, the the decision whether or not to tip on top of a service charge or post I eighty-two. That should just be in the hands of consumers. Um, and we just want to make sure that consumers have all the information they need to make an informed decision on that front. We're not saying whether they should continue to tip, whether they shouldn't, but that. The the, our worry is that the, you know, section three and four is currently written, wouldn't necessarily give and give those consumers. The information they need and what what we're worried, our big worry is, because it's happening now, is people think they're already tipping through a service charge when they're not.
Let me, let me ask, let me just explore that a bit, because, you know, I hear that a lot, and. What what is it that really gives you the impression that people think they're tipping through a service charge?
Because they've told us. They they've told us, we both, both directly, a- as well as we've seen through. Comment threads and, you know, uh.
Who is they? Who who is they when you say they told us? Like, who who is telling you that?
Uh, diners in the district. Diners in the district are are telling us, oh, they see a service charge and they assume. That they shouldn't be tipping on top because that's already a tip. That we've, that we've heard from from scores and scores of of consumers, and that was the ma- the main impetus for us issuing the guidance.
Got it, I understand. And do you not think, though, because i- is it your understanding, your experience in the office that. The service charge is fairly new and perhaps in response to uh initiative eighty-two?
So I think we've seen service charges for some time, but we've certainly seen a rise in them. And and we.
Let me narrow the question, because because you said we've seen service charges for some time. I think that's an accurate statement, but I think it it also applies to various industries. So. When you say you've seen service charges for some time, do you, are you speaking specifically to the restaurant industry?
Um, I'd say both. I I'd say both. Um. One thing that we've seen that's changed, and I think has increased the confusion, is not just that it's increasingly common to see a service charge. But we're much more commonly seeing a service charge in the eighteen to twenty to twenty-two percent range. As opposed to the five or six percent range. And I think the the former is um. Much, becomes much more confusing because it looks a lot more like a tip. And so when people see six percent service charge. They're much less likely to think, oh, this is, this is already covering my tip, than when they're seeing the eighteen, twenty-two and twenty-two percent. Which is, which uh, so, go ahead.
Now, I was just trying to follow your your logic to to conclusion. Is 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 that because most people would think. A tip is in the range of fifteen to eighteen, twenty percent?
That's right, yeah. And I think it's the combination of also the label, it's the label and the percentage that um. Those two things in combination, saying, having service in the name and seeing a percent that looks a lot like what they would have otherwise tipped. Is conveying to consumers, this is, this is, this is your tip.
Okay, and in terms of like where the service fee goes. I think I I heard in your testimony, and I think I've heard from others, that, you know, there is a a thought that the. The service fee go directly to the service worker? Did did you say that in your testimony, or have you heard that from people around this bill in your office?
So. I, uh, our, you know, the, our position of what the law requires is that. That it, where the money goes is guided by what reasonable consumers would expect. And so if people. See the eighteen or twenty or twenty-two percent, they see service charge and they think it's a tip. And the restaurant isn't treating it like a tip, in other words, isn't paying it to service workers on top of their base wages. That that is causing confusion and deception to consumers and and risks violating the CPPA. But that's, but again. So, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm, go ahead, finish, please, finish.
The the point I wanted to make is, we are, we, you know, unlike possibly the position of some other, the public witnesses that have testified. Our position is not that restaurants need to give that money like a tip. Only that if they choose not to do so, they make that clear to consumers. That, in other words, if they want to retain it for themselves, if they want to use it toward just base wages, if they want to use it for overhead costs. That's perfectly fine, so long as you are disclosing to people upfront. This is what we're using the money for, and it's not a tip, just to avoid that confusion.
So, just so I'm clear. In in, under the law, as it is today. It's the position of the Office of the Attorney General that restaurants are required to disclose. How they allocate a service charge?
Yes, and and the point there is that, and this is a law that are, that applies across the board in every industry. Which is that it is the merchant's obligation to make sure people know what they're paying for. So not just.
And that's regardless of the percentage?
That's right. Well, yes, that's right, that people should know how much they're going to be charged. As well as what they're, what what it is that they're paying for. And and particularly in in a situation where people think, and we know that people think the money is going toward one thing and it isn't. You know, that's, we we think easily fixed by the restaurant, just making clear, oh, this is where this money goes, or, oh, by the way, this is not a tip. It's being used for X, Y, Z, and that that would cure any confusion.
So, e- even if it is not reasonable to. Think that a six percent service charge is a tip, the restaurant, under the law, according to your interpretation. Are required to disclose how that service fee is used?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chairman, I under, I misunderstood the original question. I I do think it would be a different scenario. If you're talking about an amount that does not look like a tip at all. And so our position really is. Calling it a service fee and charging it somewhere in the range of of what a tip would be does trigger the obligation to it, to make sure people know what the money is being used for.
So, when you say somewhere in the range of what a tip would be, I I I would imagine that. Consumers tip in varying ranges. Uh, I I was trying to clarify a little earlier. Um, to make sure I was following the 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 point that you were making. That it might be more confusing, it sounded like the point you were making, if a service fee is fifteen, eighteen or twenty percent. Because, you know, people may typically tip in those ranges. But if the service fee is, for example, at fourteen percent. The restaurant would not be required to disclose how that service fee is being allocated?
So I think that becomes a tougher question, and frankly, you know, how we'd look into that is, is again, hearing from consumers about. You know, if there is a restaurant charging a fourteen percent service fee, we, you know, the way we'd look into that is to see, you know, what do you think this is? Um, do you think it's a tip or not? And so, you know, I, given, I can't sort of answer that in a, in a vacuum, not having looked into that. You know, our guidance would be, restaurants can be crystal clear about their compliance by doing the, taking the simple step of of explaining what their charge is. Um, again, regarded, regardless of of the percentage amount. Um, again, recognizing that it's maybe more likely for there to be confusion if it's eighteen or twenty percent. That's a way they can ensure compliance is to take that simple added step of tell people what the money is being used for.
Can, can a service charge ever actually be a tip? Can it be used by a restaurant as a tip under the law?
So in terms of, uh, I, in terms of the question of whether, um, sort of the, whether they would be. Treated for tax purposes like a tip. I think, uh, my understanding, and I may be wrong, but my understanding is that having sort of a mandatory set charge would, would not qualify it for the, the IRS sort of tax exemption. But there's certainly nothing in the law that would prevent a restaurant from using, from treating a service fee like a tip and paying it directly to their workers on top of their base wages.
Okay. But for the purposes of the law, and I guess. Just clarity for. You know, people in a position to make decisions about service fees, service charges. They can't use. A service charge is not considered a tip under federal law. And I guess for practical purposes, as you just articulated, they might be able to use it to, to, to add to. Um, what they paid their workers on top of whatever. You know, base wages and tips they receive from consumers, correct?
Exactly. So in other words, it wouldn't be classified as a tip for federal tax purposes, but they can absolutely treat it just like a tip. And treat it like a consumer would expect and pay it as an added compensation on top of a, uh, service worker's base wages.
Okay. And, and, and how is a service. Charge or service fee treated today under district tax law?
So I'm not aware that district tax. I'm not aware of the specific, if, if there is a specific district tax law provision that addresses. Service fees. I'm, I'm really only aware of the IRS tax guidance, but, um, but I can certainly look into that and, and get back to the committee.
Okay. Um, let me see. So. I want to kind of. Play out, and I, I mentioned earlier that, uh, as of, I think it's Saturday is July first. The, um, tip wage, tip minimum wage goes up to eight dollars. Um, under Initiative eighty-two, it's totally phased out in twenty twenty-seven. In terms of. Service fees and where they need to go under the law. What happens in twenty twenty-seven when tip, when the tip minimum wage ends? And, and perhaps there's no longer an expectation. Of tipping in the same way that, that it exists today. What in your view would happen to. Service fees and restaurants' obligation under the consumer protection laws in the district?
So argue.
Have service fees.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question, Chairman McDuffie, and one we've, we've put a lot of thought into and, and having thought through it, our view is that actually the obligation wouldn't change. That in other words. Again, if it's, if you're, if you're not, if you're calling it a service fee. And if you're not explaining to consumers that it is actually treated being used as something other than a tip. That that remains problematic pre, you know, in, in the current, uh, tip to minimum wage world and even post. The tip to minimum wage being phased out. Now, what will be different. Is consumers may change their decision making and some consumers may decide, I want to tip less. Now that workers are, you know, making perhaps more of a base wage. Others may choose, I don't want to tip at all. Others may say, you know, I want to make sure that my worker, my, my server is getting. Much more than the minimum wage and I want to continue to tip fifteen or twenty percent. The key to us is that people be able to make those, that that decision is in consumers' hands. And in, and that consumers don't think they're tipping when they're not. And the, the worry is that if, if. Restaurants are not explaining what the service fee is, whether today or whether. Four or five years from now, that we may still be in a world where someone wants to tip on top of even the higher minimum wage. But that they think that they're already tipping because they think the service fee is a tip and that's, that's what we want to avoid.
So, so i- i- is it your position? That the service fees. In and of themselves, regardless of industry, are confusing or that service fees in the restaurant industry are confusing?
That, that service fees in and of themselves without an explanation. Are confusion, are confusing in any industry. And in fact, you know, that's highlighted by. You know, much more aggressive action that our office has taken in, in other industries for this exact same issue. So we have, we. Sir, go ahead, Chairman.
Go ahead, you can, you can finish, please, go ahead and finish.
Sure, I'll just give, you give one example and there are multiple. You know, we sued the company Instacart. Um, the, the grocery delivery company for this exact same issue for charging service fees. That looked to consumers and were displayed like they were tips going directly to the, to the, um, the shoppers. When they weren't, when they were just going generally to the house. Um, and that was, that was a case brought under the exact same. Uh, sort of analysis, the exact same theory under the CPPA and one that led to. Um, several million dollars being brought back into the district and into the hands of, um, of consumers and service workers.
And, and the, the, the tips. In the industry, um, with like Instacart and I guess delivery services, are they typically, and I'm asking because I, I really. Are they typically in the same or similar range of restaurant tips in terms of percentages?
Um, sometimes, sometimes not. Um, and actually that, that highlights a point that, you know. The, so, so I, I think probably generally, um, a bit lower that you see in sort of the food delivery or in the grocery delivery. Space. Um, but, you know, again, you know, calling it a service charge. And making it a variable percentage, we do think creates a risk of confusion. It's, it's that in this context, especially where that service fee is at the fifteen, eighteen, twenty-two percent, we're seeing even, even more confusion.
Okay, okay. And so any industry that charges a service charge. Must disclose how the service charge is being used. Is that, is that accurate under, under your interpretation of the CPPA?
I, I always hesitate to say any industry, just without all the context. The industries we've seen it in. Um, we, we do believe that that is what the law requires, that the industry that we've analyzed and taken action in. Whether it be grocery delivery, whether it be food delivery, um, we have seen that people see service charge in a variable amount and they, they do it, they do, and. They do believe it's a tip mistakenly and that we do believe that triggers a disclosure obligation, just as, as we believe it does in the restaurant industry.
Okay. And so are there any other industries that you all see this as a challenge that you can speak to? You mentioned Instacart. And, and, and what industry would you categorize Instacart? Where, where would you place them?
Uh, delivery, delivery industries. You know, you, we see them, um, we see. You know, service fee industries in other hospitality industries potentially, as in, like in hotels. We see, I know, I'm sure most folks are aware of seeing service fees for other, um. Uh, sort of, uh, say ticket buying experiences. Um, and, and those are all. You know, in all of those industries, I, I do think the, the use of those charges without adequate explanations is a cause for concern and, and is something we're always closely. Looking into.
And, and to use an industry, you just men- mentioned the ticket industry, do, do. In your experience. In your interpretation of the CPBA. They have to disclose if they are charging a service fee. Um, or even calling it something else like an order processing fee, they have to disclose where those fees go. Otherwise it's a, it's a violation of the law.
So a- again. I hesitate because context does matter and certain, you know. What we're guided by is what, what reasonable consumers would actually expect. And so we analyze that in each industry. You know, and I also want to be careful because, you know, we have, uh. As I'm sure you're aware, we often have, you know, non-public investigations that we can't sort of comment on.
Sure, sure.
In detail, but I would say it is an area of concern for us and it's something that we closely are looking into in, in every industry. And as I mentioned, it's something though, though I know the White House and federal agencies have focused on this issue. Of, of these add-on fees as well and, and whether there are consumer confusion issues.
Yeah, I, this is helpful testimony. I guess, I, I would want to just ask another question in terms of like. Getting back to the food service industry, uh, in particular. Is it your position that. Every food service establishment. Is being treated the same way? Meaning that no matter the venue, if a place is serving food and they have a service fee. Then they must go, that service fee must go fully and directly to the service worker?
No, and, and again, that's not our position at all. The position is that restaurants for food service, they can use the fee in any way they want. It's just if it's not being treated like a tip, tell people what you're using it for. So truly, we're, we are not saying that the service fee needs to go. Directly on top of a wage, just like a tip would be. That's, that's not at all our position. It's, it truly is that restaurants can do what they please with their, with the fees they charge. But that they be transparent with consumers about what they're using the money for. In, in other words, it's, it's, as I mentioned at the outset, two key things, making sure people know. How much they're being charged and two, what it is that they're being charged for. And it's really that latter piece that is just making clear to consumers, if you're, if you're not using it like a tip, tell them what you're using it for.
I, I understand where you're coming from. I guess. Putting yourself in the position of. An owner operator of an establishment, food or otherwise. In an industry that uses. A service charge. It almost means you have to place yourself in a position of. As I use a phrase, a reasonable consumer. To decide whether. You have to disclose under the CPPA what the service charge is being used for?
Yeah, I think that's right and I, but I think that's not just the restaurant industry. I think that's how anywhere, any merchant in the district complies with the CPPA. By putting themselves in the shoes of their consumers and, and look, industries, uh, merchants, they know their, they know their consumers best. Um, and we give, you know, and the law gives wide latitude to restaurants, to other merchants and, you know, just, you know, uh. Having the deference to disclose things in a way that their, their consumers, that their diners will understand. But that, yes, that in this, in this instance, when we're talking about service fees, that the, the CPPA. Legal analysis is guided by what a reasonable consumer would expect. And in order to, um, comply with the CPPA. It, it does require putting them in the shoes of consumers, but to get to the heartier question, we, we don't want restaurants to feel like they're guessing here. Um, we want to give restaurants the tools, everything they need to comply. That's why, that's what we attempted to do with the guidance with the webinar. That's why we're going to be issuing these specific examples, literally language that they can use and be comfortable that they're in full compliance with the CPPA and. We're really hopeful that that truly will. Resolve any remaining uncertainty as to how it is that a restaurant can comply with the CPPA and still charge service fees however they want to charge them.
Okay.
Chair, Chairman McDuffie, you appear to be muted on my end.
No, no, I'm actually, I was talking to my team and just thinking about whether I have any other questions. So if you bear with me, I appreciate that.
Oh, no worries at all.
All right. I appreciate it, Mr. Talabom. I actually don't have any additional questions for you at the moment. Is there anything else you, you want to add to the record before we adjourn?
No, Chairman McDuffie, I'll just say, um, you know, a point I wanted to emphasize and that our, our office and the Attorney General wanted to emphasize is. Remain really willing and open to discussing with you and your staff or other council members about. You know, other ways to help the restaurant industry, other ways to make sure we're, we are, you know, uh, making sure that. Restaurants have the ability to comply with the law and are very open-minded about how we might accomplish that.
Thank you very much for your testimony for answering, uh, the committee's questions, uh, this afternoon. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I want to thank everyone who testified, uh, on this proposed bill today and at the previous. Hearing that we held that was recessed, uh, some time ago. Uh, as a reminder, those interested in submitting written testimony for the record may do so until Wednesday, July fifth. At five PM submissions should be emailed to the committee at. Businesseconomicdevelopment@dc council.gov. Again, that email address is businesseconomicdevelopment@dc council.gov. There being no further business before the committee. This marks the end of today's public hearing. The time is now one forty-seven PM and this hearing is adjourned.